Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Norwood Planning Board, January 27, 2020, 7:00. We are in Norwood Town Hall. We are back in Room 12 tonight, home sweet home. We've got a pretty good agenda tonight. The first thing, it's 7:00. I'm going to entertain an approval of the minutes from the 1216 meeting.
I'll move to approve.
Anything else on that? Seeing none, put it to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous, 3-0. We've got a public hearing at 7:05. So before we get into the public hearing, we just, tonight, we have a three-member board, which is a quorum. And the reason we normally have a five-member board, Board Member Al Porro is enjoying a little vacation in Florida. And Mrs. Homewood has resigned from the planning board, effective January, was it 22nd, I believe?
A little before that.
To pursue her dreams of running for selectman. I just want, Debbie, come up here and sit, come on, I mean, you.
Okay.
We've got a couple of minutes. And I would just like to personally thank myself and on behalf of the board for your, was it eight years?
Eight years.
Eight years on the planning board. You have been a really, really, really good, and I say this sincerely, we've had our disagreements on certain things, but that's what boards do. But I think that you have been a tremendous asset to the board over your eight years. You've asked a lot of difficult questions. You know, you've, as you would say, you've touched the third rail a lot of times. I think that because of some of the pushbacks and the questions you've asked, and that a lot of our projects are better because of it, you know.
Thank you, Ari.
It kids you about landscaping, but, you know, you've gotten, you've asked for a lot and...
Gotten some.
And you've gotten some. And again, I think that the, our projects are better for it, and I sincerely mean that. So just on behalf of the board, I just want to thank you for your service. We wish you the best of luck in your quest for becoming a selectman.
Woman.
Woman.
Selectman.
Selectman.
We're staying with selectmen.
Staying with selectmen. So again, just thank you. And Paul, if you want to just have any words for, you've worked with Debbie now for almost all those eight years.
Yeah, and Debbie was a hard-working planning board member that put in the time to go look at all the sites. And she was sometimes a tough negotiator with the applicants to try to get a better deal for the town, to get, make projects aesthetically more pleasing by making the landscaping look better and the architecture. And so she really tried to facilitate better projects than the ones that came in with the, just with that, they were submitted to get a better deal, better projects for the town. And so I enjoyed working with Debbie and also want to thank her. And I'll say that she's the only green Republican I've ever met. She's, it really got me confused.
Not true.
She's a strong advocate for the environment, and I want to thank her for all those efforts.
Well, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm loving all this. Just keep going, boys. I love this.
Joe? I just want to say that she did some great work on the CPA, not just, you know, getting it through to our board, and, you know, some of us worked on that, but...
She's still on that show, is she?
No, but I mean, getting it through. She really...
Oh, that's right, yeah.
The campaign, the outside campaign that really had to be done and bring it to the voter, she did a great job there. And then on all the projects, she, you better watch out, because she's driving around the neighborhood, checking things out, and she keeps an eye on things.
Just enjoyed watching and learning from you and seeing you go around town endlessly and tirelessly, looking at all the jobs and, you know, really do the...
And you're gonna, now, I'm gonna hand that over to you, young'un.
Well, it's been a pleasure. It really has.
As for my brief experience here as the associate member, I've learned plenty watching these meetings I've been a part of, and I'll take your suggestions.
I'm loving this. I'm staying. That's it, I'm staying.
No, 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 no. There's no redo.
Yeah, Speaker Paul, it's been excellent working with you, especially with planning and with CPA. You know, having someone from the community give so much effort, you know, and be involved with the different boards, it makes our job better to have that, you know.
My turn?
Your turn.
My turn. Thank you for all the kind words. I have learned a lot. I have been put through my paces, which I always appreciate. I think Paul and Patrick have done a great job. I'm incredibly proud of the CPA, and I couldn't have done it without everybody. I know, I sold my soul for more taxes, but I'm incredibly proud that we got a chapel and we're not taking that money out of the tax ba, or out of the tax base, it's kind of coming out of the taxes. That being said, can I stay as your representative until the election on the CPA?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, or any objections?
No.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I would, I would like to do that. We're in the middle of the second round of projects. It's a really good board, nine members, not unwieldy like we thought it was, might be. One of you will have to then step up after I'm, because I'm proud to be running for selectman. It wasn't something that I have had a burning desire for, but it's now or never, because it's really hard to run against incumbents in any situation. I'm sorry I had to do it that way, so you found out through a letter, but our meeting was so late, I didn't want to have a special election. I'm getting off my Viking ship and burning the ship, so you either win or die. Everybody get that reference?
Yeah.
The Vikings burn their ships and they, you know, okay. So I, after I talked to legal counsel, I said, "You have to withdraw, give your resignation," am I saying that right? "So that we can get somebody to pull their papers and run, because I think that's only fair." So I'm sorry to sneak off in the night, but it was a kind of a long week of, "When should I do this? When should I make it?" And then our meeting got canceled, and now we're not until the 27th. So I had to do it that way, but I apologize. And I've enjoyed working with all of you, really. Al, too?
Sure.
Al? Hi, Al. And I brought you something green. I was trying to find an arborvitae, but I couldn't buy one this time of year. This is a little plant. One of you's got to keep it alive, and I'm going to come in every Monday night, bring it down and put it on the desk.
Paul, your office is a lot of sun.
If I find an arborvitae that can fit down there, I'll bring it in and put it right in the corner. So I appreciate it.
It's a workspace.
I've learned a lot.
They got you flowers.
Nah, it's okay.
We'll get it when you... So anyway, Debbie, thank you again. Well, you know, it's 7:05, past 7:05, you're still talking.
I did it again.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I mean, obviously, you know, this, you're not...
I'm not leaving you.
You're not leaving.
I've got nothing else to do on Monday night, so I'm just going to come down and bother you.
Right. So good luck in your...
Thank you. I plan to leave it all on the field, as I, you know, I love analogies.
And you will.
So I'd appreciate everybody's support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onward and upward.
Onward and upward.
Give this to Patrick. Take it to your office. Don't tell her, please.
I, and hopefully won't. If you can catch it.
All right. So 7:05, we have a public hearing. Now, we only have a three-member board tonight, and this is a public hearing, this is for a site plan approval and special permit application. And multifamily development within the mixed-use overlay district. This is our new downtown overlay district that was approved at town meeting. This is for 12-14 Day Street, Louis Colton, architect and applicant. About two years ago, at town meeting, town meeting approved the planning board to appoint an associate member. And it was for cases just like this why we have an associate member. When a board member is not present or won't be present, in the case, Mrs. Homewood resigning, the associate member is available to sit in and vote on all special permits. Because these are so important and they require a supermajority, two years ago, we felt that we, you know, needed this, and this is a perfect example why. So before we start the public hearing, I am going to give the knighthood to Brian Hatchey, our associate member, who will sit in on the special permit and be a voting member. So at that point, we're going to have a public hearing, so we need to read the notice.
Just on that, we could still have five board members if Al comes back and reads up on it and follows the procedure.
Yes. But we still need a supermajority, which...
Yes, I just want to make sure that that...
Versus a simple, a supermajority for those, four out of five versus three out of five. So Joe, if you have the public hearing notice, could you read it, please?
Public hearing notice, Norwood Planning Board, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the Norwood zoning bylaw sections 9.4, Mixed Use Overlay District, and 10.4, Special Permits. The Norwood Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, January 27, 2020, at 7:05 PM in Room 12 of Norwood Town Hall, 566 Washington Street. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept comments on the special permit application submitted by Louis Colton for the development of a multifamily residential dwelling located at 1214 Day Street. The subject property is shown on the Norwood Assessors Map, is Map 2, Block 8, Lot 3. Plans and supporting materials of the proposed development are on file in the planning board office and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Joe, she, and clerk.
Thanks, Joe. All right. With that being read and said, have a seat.
Thank you very much. If I may, take advantage of the ease of it was put in here.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I think I might add that you're a part, you're a board member, I may be following a similar path. That's how she has just done, so...
What, you quit Paul Papers for selectmen?
I may very well. I was on the planning board, and my term was up just recently, so I'm, I have to look and follow where you're tripping.
Okay.
Well, good luck.
Okay. I brought additional materials and I'm thinking how to best distribute these.
Is this, is that different than what we have in the packet?
Yes, yeah. Yes, it is. We've made some updates for that. So on the, on the site drawing, there's four drawings, large size, that I'm not sure how you want to distribute these.
So we're not going to spread those out and analyze them at tonight's meeting, but you should, you should go over any changes that you made to respond to the comments that we had on the initial project.
So I have four large ones. I have the 11, 10 sets of 11-by-17s, and they are going to include the elevations, they're going to include the, there's a site, there's an architectural site plan, just for clarity, but we're really depending on the civil and the survey engineer's drawings, which is separate. And so, okay, we have all of this material, and so, so as it was discussed under the NUOD, we moved forward and we presented the opportunity of looking at the site. And we've got an addition of three units that are not, or they're not part of the original building. We're leaving the original building, pretty much except interior, fit up, and we're going to be making that probably a lot more desirable, adding some, some decks, cleaning up the inside, and then we're putting in a three-story, three-unit apartment unit. We are, we are consistent with the zoning bylaw. We have not moved forward with regards to setbacks. We meet all the setbacks. We meet the heights, we meet the area, we meet the frontage. However, in our moving forward in the, in the new, in the new zoning bylaw, when we did our calculations, and there was several ways in looking at this, and one was whether we could go to seven units, or, which we could have done, but we don't meet the parking. We could only get eight cars on, on the site, and so that's being, that being the driving force here, we did our calculations, and we came up with 4.87, which we needed to come up with five. So we are short .13 with regards to that calculation. So that is one of the things that we're presenting before you. I think we talked about that when we were here last time. And we're open to some suggestions. There were some discussions with regards to what we might be able to do to mitigate that differential of the .13, how we might be able to do that. We're here to discuss that, and we're also here to address any of the board's concerns, what you, what you would be looking for, and how we can address those issues and be able to fit within the scope and for the purpose of what this new bylaw is presenting. This new bylaw is the NUOD, to try to provide some reasonable housing, additional housing in downtown area.
Be just, before you go on to, if you could just explain, everyone, Brian's new, when you say 4.87 needs five, could you just clarify what that, what that means?
Well, under...
Under the bylaw?
Yeah.
Just the...
It's interesting. I got, I do kind of...
Or just the...
Well, it's under the, Paul, you might be able to...
So I, I think I can shed some light on this. So what we're focusing in on is in the new mixed-use overlay district, there are up to 20 units per acre of residential is allowed, kind of as a matter of right. Additional units beyond 20 units per acre are allowed by special permit from the planning board. And the maximum number is 32 total residential units. So what I think he's alluding to is that, you know, they could have done four units as a matter of right, but the, by proposing five units, it triggers that special permit requirement. And since that is a special permit requirement, it also triggers the need to provide some public benefit. And that, those public benefits are explained towards the end of this section of the zoning bylaw. And so I think that's what he was referring to, the differential between, you know, what was allowed by right and what triggered the special permit.
And when we, when we did our calculations, having thought we could round up, we can't. So that's where we came up short in those calculations, but we came up with 4.87 units with that, and we're trying to get five units.
Five additional units?
No, no, no.
No, no, five.
We already have three, we already have two, we're getting three.
You're going, you're asking for three?
Correct.
On the back building versus two?
Yes.
Okay, that's... Everybody understand that, what he's trying to do? So the new, the proposed building, right now, he could only, if we were right where we were, he could only put two units in that. But where he's at 4.87, he's asking for us to maybe allow him to go to the, a third unit.
Correct.
Right, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, continue. We have that, so now we understand.
So except for that calculation, we did it as much as we could to make this, one, fit within the neighborhood. We're mimicking the building that is behind us. We're keeping intact the front building and maintaining the character of that building. The new building, in fact, is lower than the existing building for several reasons, but that's one of the things that we wanted to do. We wanted to make this building not become a visible impaction to the neighborhood. So we're, we're, we've kept within those, we've kept within that criteria, and at the same time, did what we could to be complimentary to the buildings behind us. And as I said, it's small, it actually looks smaller than the front building, so we put...
Would you have the parking for five units?
Yes, we do.
You would?
Yeah.
So there's no, you're not asking for any variance there?
No. The only thing that we're, the only thing that we're addressing is the fact that we didn't come up with the five. We came up with 4.87. So there was comments of both Paul and, I'm saying, sorry, Patrick, did a review. You probably have some of those comments. We have addressed them, so that's what's different on these drawings, is the issues that were brought up, we addressed and corrected and added, and they're now part of this drawing. So we admit those, those issues.
Paul, anything you want to... I guess my question would be just to you, how do we get to five from 4.87? And then whatever other questions you have or comments.
So as Lou indicated, Pat and I had reviewed the plans and provided the board with a memo that listed our comments. Lou's indicated that he's revised the plans to address our comments. We'll need to take a look at, at those revised plans and make sure that everything meets what's required in the zoning bylaw. What, the main issue that I think that we need to discuss tonight is, so to, is what would be acceptable, offered and accepted as a public benefit under that special permit. You'll recall that the board met with Lou last fall, and we had a discussion about this. And this is the first time the board has ever had, under the new bylaw, this discussion. And it focused on just what exactly would be an acceptable public benefit of something close by, right in the neighborhood, that you could see. In the list of examples of work that, that the DPW Director, Mark Ryan, had provided the planning board in October, it lists off a few different types of projects. And those ranged in cost. One was to coal plane and grind down Day Street and put new curbing in. And another one was to, to do resurfacing, granite curbing and sidewalks, and the estimated cost of that was $65,650 to undertake that project as a public benefit. The other example that he provided, and these were just kind of hypothetical for, of work that really does need to be done in that area, was to resurface the roadway. And that was at a projected cost of $26,700. The last possible project that was suggested was the replacement of the banners that are on the light poles in the downtown area. Those banners are about five years old, and they're starting to get pretty worn out. We put up banners four times for each season, there's the spring, summer, winter, and fall banners. And the estimated cost of these banners for each season is $13,200 for each set of banners. So the total cost there would be $52,800. Now, given the scope of this project, it really honestly wouldn't be, I think, fair to ask the owners to make a contribution of $65,000. In particular, in this case, it really, they could do the additional two units by right, but it's that additional third unit that triggers this particular requirement for a public benefit. So the board needs to try to figure out what's really equitable and reasonable to ask for. And, you know, to throw the pressure on you, this is the first one out, and so you don't want to, you don't want to give away the store for the first, first time out, but we have to be reasonable in what we ask for. And so one suggestion that I had, and this is just throwing it out there for discussion, was the, the banners would seem to be something that could be separated out, so that the board could request maybe one set of banners for $13,200. And in the future, if another project comes along, we could try to seek some funding for those additional banners. But in looking at the three options that was provided, this is the one that kind of, it's a separate discrete, you could break out a piece of the project where the total is banners for four seasons, but we could just ask for a donation for banners for one season. And that would be, I think, in the ballpark of about what we'd be looking for. Having said all that, we are open to suggestions from the board members and from the project, the owners and the applicant, for other things that they think might be reasonable. I will say that at the end of our last meeting, the idea came up of creating a donation account, where some of money could be placed into that account and used at a later time for a project in the downtown area. I discussed that with Dave DeLuca, our town attorney, and he looked at the bylaw and he said, you know, "Does it say you can do that in the bylaw?" "No, it doesn't say we can do that." And he said, "It really should be in the bylaw if the board wants to do that." And so as a separate issue, I think we should have a discussion about whether the board would like to do a small amendment to the zoning bylaw, to put something like that in that allows for that option in the future.
Another thing, we, we do have the owners here, so as part of the, part of this discussion and negotiation, that we're looking for something that would be reasonable, fair, and that can work for everybody. I might lend a similar type of program that we have, that we had in frame under our bylaw. And that, what Paul has suggested, is something that we, as a planning board member, we used to keep funds within, within the department. And when they accumulated to a point where a project was needing something else, we would, or needing some mitigation, that those funds were available to, you know, to pull out and use. And that was fairly success, you know, we've done that successfully. But in any case, with the owners here, and if this will be, if we can entertain that, that's number one, I think we have to come to that point, that that is a way of us to be able to work this and get to that five, what we are looking to be able to do, and do it in a reasonable way. And like I say, I think it's going to be helpful for the project. Architecturally, I think that if we didn't do it, I think it would be, it wouldn't be compatible with everything that we're trying to do. I think it would look like we forgot to put another story on the building, so...
Yeah. Joe?
I just, I think it's a great idea to be able to do that, amend the bylaw and put together some fund. I think it's a very reasonable thing to ask, and I don't think it's, I think it's doable, certainly. And I think it, it would sound like a good idea to town meeting. I think it could go through.
Just, Paul, are we, are we, are we talking at all about the plans tonight, or we're going to let you guys review the plans before we, because some of our questions may be answered in the, in the weeds here in the plans?
So we, you know, we'll need to review the plans during the day and just go over them, and so it's likely I'll be, you know, the board will end up continuing the hearing.
Yeah.
And, but I just wanted to kind of lay out, the big issue is just how we're going to resolve the public benefit question.
Is, would you like the owner to, as the owner, I'm sorry, the owner here?
Yes.
Just, if you could, you can join us, sir. If you like, just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Yorans Kisis. I'm from Westwood, 482th Street.
Okay. And you understand what, how the bylaw works?
Yeah.
And, you know, the bylaw is set up where you can do, as Paul stated, you can do the two units by right, but to get to that third, it kicks in a little something, a little something back to the town, and again, being fair and proportionate to the size of the project. You know, we still have to go through site plan review, look at landscaping, look at parking, lighting, all the, the building itself, all of that, but, I mean, is the... the, is the, is the thirteen two in the ballpark?
Hmm.
It seems like you're-
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to, to work with the town.
Is twenty better?
Twenty is better.
This is a good negotiation. I think, but when, we've, we've been talking and been throwing this back and forth and looking for something. And Mr. Kassidis had made a suggestion, looking at, looking at the size of the project and how much is going to be spent in building it. And it's not an expensive project. It's, it's a, I, I think we're, we're trying to keep it, for him, reasonable. And, and I architecturally designed it so that it can be, you know, economical for him to build. So I think, I'm-
We are looking for a nice looking building though. I mean, we're not looking for-
Yeah, and I am too. I think those too. And I, if you've seen it, if there's any objection to it, I, you know, certainly-
Well, we'll, yeah, we can talk about that.
But let's start with the number that he suggested, okay? Because there's, I, I think Paul's already looked at a number. And certainly the Public Works put out a number which kind of was hard to swallow, but nonetheless, it's fine. The numbers were put on the table. He put out a number of like somewhere between six and eight. So is that right?
Yeah, I mean, we can work-
So, I mean, we're, we're tossing numbers out here, looking for something that is going to work for everybody.
Roughly, what's your, what's the investment here in this, to build this thing? To, to read, to, you're, you don't have to give me exactly, but a total investment for the new, the new project, the new building, the grounds, the, the change to the existing building, the upgrades, what do we, how much, I mean roughly, I'm not looking for-
The new building is about five hundred.
Five hundred thousand?
Now, after, I'm gonna have to do the old one. So probably another hundred fifty.
Another hundred, yeah. So you're looking at a six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollar investment in that piece of property, in that eighty thousand square, or whatever it is, ten thousand square feet. And also, if we look at fifty percent of that, that's sort of, you know, I'd be, you know, we'll talk about amongst the board, I'd be looking more in the ten grand, probably anyway. But I don't know. Paul, what's, what is your, I don't know, what, what, and we're not gonna hold you to it because the board's gonna have to vote on it, but what is a proportionate amount?
So I, one, one thing that I did was estimate what the, what the rent, a month's rent would be. Based on the rents that we've seen for the affordable units of the new apartment developments in town, we know the market rate units are renting for over two thousand, twenty-five hundred a month. The affordable units are renting for around fifteen hundred a month. So I, I said, well, you know, what, what if one of these apartments was going to rent for fifteen hundred dollars a month? This is about thirteen thousand is less than a year, ten months worth of rent for one unit. And after eight or nine months, that one unit, you know, would eventually pay for. So I, but that was just, I, I was just trying to come up with some rationalization for how you would get there. And, and to me, it didn't seem unreasonable to ask for less than one year's rent for, for a donation for, for a public benefit. But this is, you know, we really don't have a lot of guidance here to go by, but that was one way I looked at it.
I mean, I, I, I don't think the thirteen grand is, is outrageous. And to that point, once you've done it, you have that third unit and you, now you're getting it rent forever. So I'll just open it up to any, Patrick, I'll start. Any thoughts on, and we'll go right around?
Paul discussed this earlier, and I think it goes back to what Paul was saying is a little, and making that correction within the bylaw of setting up a, a kind of a account where similar projects where, you know, they can't really do a public use benefit that we wrote, that we wrote in there in terms of public accessible parking, a public accessible open space. But I think the issue right now is that-
It's just, we just need the dollar amount. What we, what happens to it, you know, if we put it in a, in a, an amended bylaw account, or we use it towards banners or something is irrelevant. I think we just got to come up with a dollar number, right?
Well, at this time, we won't, the, for this particular project, that would be moot as far as setting up an account, right? I mean, this, this will be, would be done by then, before we get a chance to put, so that we would have to go with, you know, take a project and, and apply it. And the banners sound like a good idea. It sounds like a reasonable amount for a very small project. I mean, we probably won't have it, most, we would expect most projects to be bigger than this, and that we would get something that would show probably on the property or near the property, whether it be a, a place to sit or a small park or something like that, or whatever the benefit might be. When you have a lot, because we expect them to be larger. This one is, is quite small. I think the banners probably fits the bill.
Brian?
I like the idea of the banners. It's a simple and straightforward, tangible.
I mean, I guess someone put you on the spot here. Do you think that the, like the thirteen two is an unreasonable figure for the size of the project? I guess that's what it comes down to. If, and then again, we'll, we'll talk and-
Given, given the, the analysis, the rental analysis and the revenue generating aspect of the property, putting it in that perspective, it seems to make sense to me that thirteen thousand is not a unreasonable figure.
Yeah, I would tend to agree. It does seem like a lot when you just have it separate from a, a project like this, but rolling it into the cost of, of everything and having a good precedent going forward for the rest of the projects.
Joe?
I would say, when you look at it, you're, you're paying this upfront, but in the long term, it won't seem like a lot over a period of time as you rent it out year after year after year. So it seems like a very reason, it seems reasonable.
To get that third unit?
Yeah.
Short money to get that third unit, which will be a long-term generating, money generating.
I mean, upfront, maybe it, there's a, that's what the, you know, you get pinched upfront, but in the long run, it'll pay for itself before you know it.
So, I don't know. So you, you have to think about, I don't know, do we need to, can we let the applicant think about that? And, I mean, I think you kind of know where we're at. You know, obviously, you've got to look at your numbers and, and, and think, you know, it, you know, getting a third unit is, is, is huge.
One, one thing I would just add to the mix is that for, for our perspective at this point, we had started this a long time ago. And I think what we would be requesting, we, we'd like to try to get this thing moving in some-
Oh, yeah. We're, we're, we're rolling now. We're rolling.
So I think that, that's good. And I think that, again, and I, the last meeting that we, we had, and I think it was brought up, to do something that is reasonable.
Yeah.
You know, and we could understand. I may just throw this out, that if this is, which is interesting, is that you're predicating this on, on a, a return of rent. Maybe that could be the, maybe, would the money need to be put up front? Or could it be attached to the rental so that it can be paid over? I don't even know that we've talked about this, but-
It would, it would be a condition of approval. And just when that condition needed to be met is something that the board would have to discuss. It, we would not want to make it at the end of the project after everything else is done. But maybe it could be, we could come up with a mutually agreed upon time that wouldn't require an immediate upfront payment, but at some point during the project that would, that would work for both sides.
Well, we're, we're setting a precedent here. So I, I understand this is going to be a, you know, this is something we've got to try to go and vet out. It's going to be an interesting, an interesting discussion.
So we'll let you guys think about it unless you want to agree to it tonight, but if-
If I agree, if I disagree, I can do it.
Well, we're still gonna, we're still, we're still gonna go through the process, but-
So we, we have to, what I'm going to recommend is that the board vote to continue the hearing to February tenth, to our next meeting. We'll review the, the revised plans, make sure everything that's required in the zoning is on those plans. If there's still something that we have a question on, we'll, we'll contact Lou. And if the plans are all in good shape, the board, you know, if you're, we are in agreement on what the public benefit is, the board could, could act on this at the next meeting if everything's in line. So that's the course of action I'm going to suggest.
And Paul, because, say, let's, let's jump forward and, and assume that we've, the criteria is met and the, the money, we've discussed all of that, and that's fine. And we're ready to move forward with the project. Because he has, because he would have at that point, an agreed town benefit amount settled on, at that point, there's, I mean, we basically, we can look at the plan, we can look at site plan review, but we, at that point, we're, we're not gonna, I mean, you wouldn't deny the project at, at that point. We're, we're beyond that at this point. We're looking at the nuts and bolts of the project. We're going to look at your drainage. Hopefully you have drainage calculations.
That will be done on Friday.
And so the town engineer will have to look at all that. Because that looks pretty low in the back. And I, yeah. So I mean, I, I just happened to take a peek back there and-
But we have storage. We, we have, we have drainage storage.
Drawing, and you'll, you'll have all of that. And my only comment on the, on the picture is that, you know, the connection, there's no connection between the buildings because you need twelve feet. And, but you're allowed to put a second building on, in the new mixed use overlay district. The decks between the two. And this is only a comment now, on the drawing, it looks like a fire escape. It, it, I mean, it probably will serve as that point, but it, it will be a nice sitting area for-
Oh, yeah. And, and from my perspective, because I used to be building commissioner too. So fire safety is going to be one of my critical issues to begin with. But what, what we have done with that is take advantage of, one, the separation.
How far is the separation?
You have to have ten feet, a minimum of ten feet.
Ten feet? Okay. All right. So that's a pretty good-
And I think a little bit more than that. So if you'll look on-
You have twelve?
Yeah. If you look on the floor plan, on, on, where it says site plan, you'll see that I've got a reasonable deck there. It's a, it's a long reasonable deck with stairs at both ends. Now, what happens with those stairs, and I, I've marked it on the drawings, they're, they're a scissor stair. I don't know if you're familiar about how a scissor stair works. It's a way, it's an economical way of, of, of saving space. So as you're going down on one run, you're coming in underneath the other one so that you're, you're utilizing two runs of stairs within one space.
And then you'll still have some deck space up there.
Correct. That's why I was able to try to maximize my deck space.
Okay. So-
This is a public hearing, and we do have a neighbor in the room, and so-
We're gonna, we're gonna go to that. And you are gonna let us know on where you are on that town benefit? Or have we settled that? We have not settled that at this tonight, right? Not yet. You good with it? Thirteen two?
Thirteen two?
I think I hear him gulping very hard.
Okay.
Well, there you go. Thank you. Is that agreeable? Let me ask you, on, on the board, is that agreeable?
Yes.
Any chance of negotiating?
Well, it's-
I'm looking with the negotiation sheet.
Good. That's, that's good. Now, it is a public hearing. So if anyone from the public would like to speak, where the plans, I'm going to be honest with you, as the town planner had said, he just got today the new set of plans with a lot of detail on it, that a lot of our questions may be answered once these guys dig into the plans and look at it. So if it's something that is too much in the weeds, we may hold off to the next meeting. But if someone would like to speak tonight, just ask your name and address.
I'm Brian Caving. I own sixteen Day, which is adjacent. I'm here for a matter of interest. And I did work with Paul briefly back when we had the first informational meeting, which was confusing to somebody like myself, to read what the new zoning-
Oh, it's brand new, yeah.
... is all about. So that, that was my primary interest, obviously, and then to see what this gentleman was planning to do with the, with the property. So I guess going forward, obviously, I still continue to be interested.
Yeah. No, absolutely. It, it's, it's new to the town since the, since town meeting. And, you know, the whole purpose of this mixed use overlay district downtown is to revitalize, to put a little investment downtown in some of the areas that maybe haven't seen some investment in some years and, and kind of breathe a, a fresh breath, if we would, down there a little bit. And, you know, small steps. So good. Thank you. We will have another public hearing and, yes, ma'am, if you could state your name and address.
Debbie Homewood, forty-nine B Street. Being that I was involved in working on this mixed use overlay, I have been asked a question twice in the last two weeks about this particular project. And I said, I didn't have the paperwork. And, and one of the questions was, are we going to, is the board going to do like a percentage of the public, public goods?
Public benefit?
The public benefit.
So this one's, three quarters of a million, the next, I mean, how are you going to decide what's equitable? So maybe the next guy does all-
Well, I think that, going back to Paul's point, he maybe made a good point, is that you want to look at the, the investment being done and you want something fair. I mean, you don't want a, a guy who's, you know, putting a hundred thousand dollars into something, you know, make them pay eighty thousand dollars in public benefit. I mean, yeah, so-
I agree. And I, I think, you know, it would be bad being the first guy.
I don't know, I don't think we have a, we, there's no formula at this point. There's no saying that it's, that, you know, if you go to the building inspector and say, I need a permit for a five hundred thousand dollar investment, that it's going to be X amount. I think we look at each one individually and, and I, I'm sure they're all going to be along the same line of, you know, of percentage or fairness. You know, some guy comes in with a million dollar project, well, he may be buying two banners, you know, breakfast and dinner, you know. So, but there's no set formula.
You may also have someone who takes a piece of their land and allows for a small pocket park-
Pocket park, anything, yeah.
That enhances his property and helps it, you know, get tenants in and say, gee, this is nice. But it also can be used by the public perhaps. And so it's a little different. So you, it's, it would be more difficult to put a, a dollar amount on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, sometimes it's not just money. There's other means of value that might be-
Open space.
As part of a negotiation.
Yep. Yep. Little pocket parks, exactly. All right. So if that's it, any other questions tonight from any of the board members?
The next time we meet is on the tenth.
Of February?
Yep.
Okay.
Exactly. And I just want to make sure that that's when we're going to meet and everyone knows that. And if we were to postpone, I mean-
Continue.
Continue till then, that everyone understands that.
Okay. If that, no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to continue until February tenth at?
Seven oh five.
Seven oh five.
So moved?
And it'll either be here or upstairs. We're not quite sure at this point, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll have to check the schedule.
Sustainability.
I thought, I was, it's been, um-
So.
You just need a second.
I need a second. Okay, all those on continuing public hearings, say aye. Aye, opposed? None, four, zero. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
We're, we're on, we're on a roll here with this.
I'm gonna leave you if I will. Own this. This?
Patrick will be glad to carry it all back to the office.
It's all right. I'll put it next to my book.
He's young.
There were no, I'm writing.
I took a fall. I took a fall. I don't know what it was.
I'm telling you, I've seen other people.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time.
Very nice. It could be an affordable unit.
Is there another copy of the memo that we just adjusted?
Give me a copy of any questions.
Yeah.
All right. The next is not a special permit. It's just a site plan review. So Brian, you are, your duties were, were, you were great. Now you're back on the, you're putting it to the bench. You're back on the bench, at least for this one. But you can still participate in discussion by all means.
Oh, he forgot his floor.
Oh.
Didn't he leave?
I think I have that. That's, that was a packet most of, so, yeah, I have that. Oh, is there? Okay. Oh, there, okay.
Maybe supplemented some stuff for you.
It's a new one. Even though it's stated, there's some corrections on the back, red lines.
This is just supplementing information, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we have a site plan review for a multifamily residential development, 429 Napont Street. Ron Nation, builder applicant, David Hearn, attorney. Just for people wanna know where 429 Napont Street is, that is the other Napont Street across the highway, right at the corner, is it the Jaguar property and the gas station? I forget what kind of gas station it is.
Gas station's on Route 1.
Route 1, but it's behind it.
And Napont Street runs in back of that and then beyond, in back of the office building and all that. And we're above that.
Right.
Next to the Jaguar Land Rover dealership.
Right.
And then beyond this site is Summit Place. And in back of it is Hilltop Gardens.
So it's right where you, Napont Street back onto Route 1, basically, down in that Paul, do you wanna start us off or, and we'll get Attorney Hearn?
Well, Patrick and I reviewed the project and provided the board with the memo, with comments on it. We also provided our project review comments to the applicant's engineer and they have submitted some revised information on Friday and we took a quick look at that and some of our questions and concerns have been addressed. But having said that, I think we should have the applicant's attorney give the board a rundown on the project. Happy to do that, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
All right. Members of the board, for the record, my name is David Hearn Jr. I'm an attorney with offices at 470 Washington Street here in Norwood. What is before you is the application by Ravenwood LLC. That is the entity controlled by Mr. Nation that is proposing to complete a project that was originally permitted by the zoning board back in 2005. What was proposed in 2005 was a, an 18-unit condominium project of over seven buildings. Four of the buildings would be three-unit buildings, three of the buildings would be two-unit buildings. And as we mentioned before, this is 429 Napont Street. So it is a piece of property that is zoned in the A zoning district for multifamily, located between the Jaguar Land Rover dealership, which runs down into Route 1, and the Summit Place condominium on the other side, and Hilltop Gardens that butts in the rear. The property runs from Napont Street up to the stub end of Coolidge Avenue. The property is owned by Napont Street Realty Trust. Joseph Robichaud is the trustee of that trust. And going back to 2005, Mr. Robichaud proposed and the project was approved for the 18 condominium units on the, in the several buildings. One building was built, a three-unit building that's right out front on the site, and the foundations for six more buildings were installed on the property. But the downturn in the economy, the recession and a bunch of other factors prevented the finishing of that project. Mr. Nation came along and entered into a purchase and sale agreement with Mr. Robichaud by which Mr. Nation would purchase the property and go forward with the project in essentially the same design, the same plan as was proposed in 2005. And in 2005, the zoning board gave approval for a special permit relief, which is required for multifamily housing in any district that allows multifamily in our town. It's not allowed as a right, it's only allowed by special permit. And also some dimensional variances that dealt with the separation of the buildings and the size of the side yards. Now, the side yards that I'm referring to are what you might consider the backyards of the units because of the way they're lined up on the roadway. But those were granted. Along the way, the Conservation Commission gave orders of conditions under our local wetlands bylaw as well as under the state statute, and those were extended. The zoning relief was extended also a number of times. Most recently, in October of this past year, the Conservation Commission extended the order of conditions under the local bylaw so that it would go for two more years and that matches the time already allowed under the state bylaw. So as far as the CONCOM is concerned, we have the necessary orders of conditions to complete the work. The zoning board at the January 7th meeting, three weeks ago, approved the relief that we requested, which was the same relief as was requested in 2005. And I stress to the board, and I stress to this board, I stress to the zoning board, and now to you, that this is really the same project as was previously approved. What is different with respect to this project, when you think of other projects that you might be looking at, is that we already have much of the infrastructure already constructed on the site. The roadway was put in years ago. The first building was located. The other building locations were set by the installation of foundations and by the installation of underground utilities. So those are all in place. The foundations unfortunately will have to be removed because sitting out in the open without a building on top of them is not good for foundations and they aren't considered sound enough for us to use. But we are going to replace them in the same location, with one exception, as the foundations have been sitting for the last many years. The exception is that our engineer recommended that one of the foundations be moved about a foot and a half from where it was because apparently it wasn't exactly where it needed to be. And the building separation had not been complied with as to one of them as, I think, an accidental violation, but we're going to remedy that. When we went to the zoning board on January 7th, the board, I think, was happy to see the prospect that this would be completed after all these years. And a couple of neighbors from Summit Place were present and they had questions or concerns that they voiced about the design of the project and just some of the features of the exterior of the buildings. We have taken pains over the last few weeks to make some revisions to the plans and we have renderings tonight. And I think that renderings may have been dropped off late last week and also sent electronically to the board that shows some changes and some additions of features to the buildings that would, I think, make them more attractive. You have not seen this project before because in 2005, the planning board had, did not have jurisdiction over this type of project. The development plan review was provided under the local zoning bylaw, but that was in the hands of the inspector of buildings rather than the site plan review that we now have with the planning board. So this is a project that will result, we hope, in 18 units. My client proposes to develop them as condominiums and we'll sell them. He's not planning to hold them for rental. And the site itself will be managed by a condominium association, as all condominiums are, and they will have responsibility for plowing, for trash removal, and landscape maintenance and so forth. We think certainly that this is an improvement over the present conditions on the site because it's a project that through no fault of anybody, just did not get completed. And we now propose to complete it and to take the foundations out, replace them with new foundations and buildings on top of them. So Jim Soucy is here from United Consultants. That firm has been doing the engineering on this. He is very familiar with the project and he's got all the plans. He's happy to go through the plans, Mr. Chairman, however you wanna do it. But as I say, we're here for site plan approval only. We're not looking for special permits or anything from the planning board. We comply with the parking requirements and the other types of issues that the planning board might otherwise be asked to deal with by special permit. We don't need any of those. We comply. We only needed dimensional relief in small respects from the zoning board and we needed special permit relief because you can't have multifamily without special permit. I've given you this evening a letter that summarizes certain aspects of it, particularly for those of you who may not have been familiar with the project. I know one of the questions that comes up is how long is it going to take to finish the project? My client expects it'll be finished within two years. That, of course, is affected by conditions beyond his control, market conditions, weather, certain environmental conditions. But the hope is that all things being equal, we'll be able to get this finished within two years. You build some, you sell them, you keep building with the money you get from the other ones. And that's the plan, Mr. Chairman. I think the other things, Mr. Soucy can speak to this in greater detail than I can, but the environmental concerns about stormwater, control and all that, the underground utilities, those are all in place, have been approved by the CONCOM. And we're presenting this in a somewhat different posture from what you usually see because it was started and just not finished.
Great. Just so the board members know, this is site plan review, so this is not, they, we're not gonna, we cannot deny the project. We approve or approve with conditions. You know, we're not here to say that the project can or cannot go forward. We're here for only site plan review. So why don't we let Jim, if you could just turn that easel a little bit towards the board, a little bit, my eyes aren't that good. I don't know if the camera can grab that or not. And then, or, yeah, just maybe back so they, just kick it back a little bit. Yahweh, there you go. And then if you wanna go over, you know, the nuts and bolts of it, parking, the storm, the, you know, whatever you need to landscaping, lighting, anything like that.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the comment about the jurisdiction or the limits of jurisdiction of the board. You are sitting as three members of a five-member board. So it requires a majority of the board as constituted, which means it requires three votes.
That is correct, yes.
And any determination by the board. So this is not a case where with three people sitting, a two-to-one, a two-to-one vote constitutes a majority. It's, it has to be in the, I think, unfortunate situation that we're short.
At that, to that point, Attorney, it's, I guess it's your choice to move forward. I mean, we will have a fourth member and/or fifth member by our next meeting. So our fourth member, when Al comes back, basically, he could go to the Mullen Rule and fill himself in and that and vote, if this was to be continued. But I'll leave it up to you if you wanna continue tonight or would you rather wait for a larger board?
I think we'd rather, you know, begin this. And if we can resolve it tonight, great. And if it has to go over, it goes over. I think it's helpful that Mr. Hachi is able to sit here and observe while he is not presently a full member of the board. His presence and questions, I think, would be helpful. And if at some point he becomes a full member of the board, if the Mullen Rule applies, I think it makes it easier for him to certify. So we're okay with that.
All right, so Jim, if you wanna go ahead and just go through the plan?
Jim Soucy, with United Consultants, Attorney Hearn, previously stated, this project is 90% built out. All of the underground utilities are in connection to the foundations. Binder course, pavement is done and the islands have the permanent stuff. Basically, all's we're doing is going in, taking out new six foundations, putting in new foundations, build the houses, build it up. There are a couple of little additions based on the existing conditions plan. We're gonna be putting the dumpster up in this corner. That way, the truck can come in, get right to it, back up and go without any issues. And we're gonna put the group mailbox in this location here so that again, the postal person could come in, make the loop, drop off and go. We are adding one parking space in between Building 5 and Building 6. If you look at the original parking layout, they had two spaces here. I personally don't like it because I think it's partially blocking the garage door for that unit. So what we've done is eliminated that space there and just moved it down in between these two buildings. These buildings already have a space, this would have a space. This building currently has a space, but we're gonna be extending that. There's currently a hydrant right here, just behind the corner of the building a little bit. And when we had the department head lead, the fire department, asked if there was something we could do so that there wouldn't be possibly a car blocking them if they even needed to get to the hydrant. So what we've done is I've stretched this space out about four or five feet so the car can pull further down. And we're actually gonna relocate the hydrant to about three foot off the edge of pavement. That way, they shouldn't have any issues with, if there's a vehicle parked here or not, they can still have free access around the hydrant. There won't be a couple of boulders in front of it so nobody drives through it. Details are shown on the further plan. So, I mean, again, the drainage system is in. When we went through CONCOM a year or so ago, they made me run the calculations. Originally, this was designed back in '05 under TP40 and they wanted to make sure that the drainage system as installed would meet the current rainfall data that the town now uses. We did that and they agreed with our conclusions that the drainage system will function using the higher rates.
Is there a sewer there? Is there, are you going in the...
Nope. Right now, the sewer line comes in...
I mean, are you gonna feed into the Napont Street? Is there a pipe there?
Yes.
Okay.
The drainage system, again, the drainage goes to an underground recharge over here. These couple of catch spaces, they go to two recharge areas here. In between each of the buildings is a roof recharge unit made out of cul-de-sac chambers. Water line is in, connected to the building. Gas line is in, connected to the building. So all the underground is connected out in Napont Street. It's been running through the project, it's been run to each of the buildings. And like I said, the binder course is down. So really, once they get done with the reconstruction of the foundations, as far as the site work goes, the only thing that really needs to be done is the top course and the landscaping. Again, speaking of landscaping, there was a rather expensive landscaping plan done originally. We've tried to mimic that here. The difference in the two greens didn't really come through, but these plants in this area here are all planted and the plants to the rear of Building 4 and along in here, these are already planted. Everything else is to be planted. So again, it was a fairly aggressive landscaping plan.
That's my only comment.
No.
Well, you don't get off that easy. She's here in spirit. To that point, you know, the buildings are, there's not a lot in the front. I mean, you're right on Main Street with the front doors of those buildings, right?
Um...
I mean, you come out and you're on Blacktop.
You're probably, you know, 30 feet from the edge of the pavement to that one, a little closer.
Yeah, but if you come out your front door, you're right on the, you're right in the...
The units that, the units that have... The units that, the units that have front doors. I mean, several of the units are designed, he'll put up the rendering.
Yeah, maybe that should be a better...
Some of the units, you see that unit there. By the way, the first building in has been occupied for a number of years. It's a three-unit building. I think two of the units have been occupied. And they're all permitted, there's certificates of occupancy for them. But that's, this is a representation of a two-unit building, and so the door is on the, I mean, you can come in through the garage, but the door is on the side also there. So you're not stepping out into traffic. And the three-unit buildings, it'll be different because you've got a unit in the middle. Jim, do you have one of those?
That would be a three, three-unit?
That would be a three.
And you're gonna have three of those?
Four, four three-unit buildings.
Four three...
Three two-unit buildings.
And all the garages are two-car garages?
There.
And there's a little plantings and a little...
Yeah, there's islands in front of every building.
The, I understand that there may be a concern and, you know, but this is what is there.
Yeah.
We're not starting with a blank slate. We're starting with something that was permitted 15 years ago. There is an argument that the original permits would still be valid, but rather than spend a lot of time arguing, we're doing, going the route, and we wouldn't even be here in that case. But we're going this route because we think it makes more sense, timing-wise and everything else. So, yeah, it's close, it may look like it's close to the street, but this is, this is a driveway. That's the other thing to remember. This is not a public way. It is not a throughway. This is private property and will remain private property. So the people who are using this are the people who live there and their guests. The parking is adequate, I mean, I say adequate, it conforms to all the requirements in that respect, too. So...
Yeah, if you have a two-car garage, you're...
Two-car garage and the third unit. You need three spaces under the bylaw, and we have them with the various exterior spaces and then two spaces per unit. So...
I mean, with that, the way that's set up of the car, just curious, because I know you have, on the, on the plane, you have parking up at one end and across, you have a small little parking area with five, five spots and then in between a building. Would you, I guess, Attorney Herring, you, or Paul, the, a car parked in front of the garage, I mean, would that, was that designated a parking spot for that unit?
No, we're not designating those because it would stick out too far. A full-size car, a large car might stick out, but you, if you live there, you can pull into your garage and...
That's why you have the extra parking.
And we have extra parking between them as well as up the hill.
Okay. Any, well, continue, I'll let you...
It's, it's pretty much...
I will point out, Mr. Chairman, the, Jimmy, you put the rendering up.
Sure.
What is it changed to the design of the buildings from what was proposed 15 years ago? And this comes from our discussions and the comments made at the zoning board meeting. The overhang over the, over the garage doors, as well as by the door there, the entrance to the unit, those are additions from what had been. I mean, the, the first building that's been built is kind of a flat elevation to it, so we're adding some texture and adding some features that we think improve the look of it. Also, the lighting that will be put in, when it was approved by the building inspector back in 2005, I think it called for one light over the double garage door. We're proposing, we have units and you have the cuts for those there. I think we're going to have, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, a light to either side of the garage doors.
Right.
And then to be light by...
Three recess lights in the, in the overhang.
Yeah. And then we're going to have lighting by the doors, entrances to the building itself. And those should provide, what, on the, recessed lighting on the overhang, and then are we putting additional lighting? Where's the lighting going to be on the front of the building?
Either side of the, on the front of the building?
Yeah.
There's another, the main entrance, or the front entrance is, there'll be, there'll be, there's a light at every entrance placed to a building by code.
And by the garage doors?
Yes, one on either side.
They've mounted on the, that's what you have the cuts for. So those will provide adequate lighting. It's greater lighting than was originally proposed, but that will provide adequate lighting for the driveway areas and the roadway itself. We're not proposing streetlights or anything like this.
Nothing, no spotlights down on the road, nothing like that, just the...
Just whatever comes from the fixtures for each unit.
Is the entrance to the property pretty much gonna stay the same, or you're not doing anything to the entrance, or?
No, no plans.
No plans.
So the, the entrance, there was a sidewalk installed by, by Robichaud years ago, out on, out on Naponton Street. So it connects up to something someday. It was gonna be connected to something, I guess, not long after, but it's, it still doesn't go anywhere. But, but there is a sidewalk out there, in a granite, in a granite curb.
Okay. You set your, right now? Joe?
The driveway, what's the distance between the buildings? I know there's, it's not totally straight, but what's the range anyway?
You mean across?
Across from one building to the...
The building is...
No, across, I'm sorry, did you mean across the driveway?
Across the driveway from one set of buildings to the other.
Forty feet.
Yeah, I would say probably at its narrowest.
About forty feet.
It's in the forty to, some, some are a little more, some, I think forty is about the minimum.
So that, and that's just all part-top there between the buildings mostly, just a...
Probably not, yes.
And no sidewalks?
Not within the project, no, there isn't room for them.
Sidewalk is out on Naponton.
I think there's a bit of a concern that there aren't sidewalks. Is, you're saying it's not possible, or?
No. It's, when you get through here, which is about the narrower spot, you'd have to, to put the roadway and a sidewalk in, you'd have to take about three feet out of the front of these islands and a couple of feet here, which is only gonna put you out two, two-and-a-half feet off the corner of that building.
You'd need probably about six feet anyway for a, six to eight feet for a sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it could be twenty-four feet for the driveway and the sidewalk and it just...
The, the other thing about sidewalks is that they'd be interrupted frequently by the spaces allotted either to get into the garages or the spaces between the buildings where the overflow parking is provided. So you'd be running a few feet of sidewalk, then no sidewalk, then a few more feet of sidewalk, and then no sidewalk. And what you'd be creating really would be more of a problem with respect to safe passage back and forth of vehicles, as well as any pedestrians. I mean, it does no, we don't think it, we don't think it makes sense, we don't think we can really narrow that driveway and have it be suitable for the site. And again, we're starting with something that's already, to a great extent, in the ground. If we were starting from scratch, we might be talking about a different design with everybody, this board, zoning board and so forth. But when it's already in the ground and already permitted the way it is, and the utilities are already in, I mean, to the point where there are stubs into those foundations that we have to cut back when we remove the foundations and then replace them, but everything's in there. So I appreciate, you know, and we've heard this discussion, had this discussion with the planning department, too, questioning about sidewalks, but I don't know where you can put them.
How about a little light by the dumpster in the back here, you know, it's kind of, I don't know if I'm really...
Putting a light near the dumpster?
Asking too much if, if it's all, is it big, or if you can get a light in the ground, or?
Something on a...
Maybe something, I was just trying to, you don't have anything in the front here. I mean, you have lights in the front, but...
Maybe spotlight up the corner of the building?
Yeah, maybe something off, off the building even, or...
Yeah, we could do that. That makes sense. Back corner of building three.
A light for the dumpster area, you mean?
Which is, yeah, because you've got those parking spaces there, too, right?
Yeah.
Four, five, those are parking spaces, four, five, six, seven, eight?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, even, I think to Rob's point, that's a pretty good point, even, maybe even just a light pole with a, with a carriage light on it or something for those people pulling in there. Looks pretty dark on that. I mean, that's, I mean, I'm not a, you know, lighting expert. He's a lot more than I am. But I mean, yeah, just even a, a post with a carriage lamp on it or something, a light for those people pull in.
Yeah, just the corner there.
So the raccoons can see better.
I was gonna say that, but I didn't think I could. I don't think that's a problem.
That's a good point.
You know, and we could come up with something that provides some lighting without interfering with...
Brian, anything you see that you question, or?
I'm just trying to envision this. Is there any curbing in, is there?
Interior, there's tape cracker.
I was just trying to picture it, it's my only question.
If you've, if you've been down there, I don't know if you've been down there, when you drive in and you look to the right, the first building, it will be similar with a few, similar in scope with a few more details to the new buildings, but similar to the way it lays out.
We're gonna put those details on the first building, too.
You're gonna add them to the first building?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so we want, we want them to match.
So there's the perimeter of the property and these islands that are in front of the units have the similar curbing? Are those, those...
Yeah, no. The, the song right here is Cape Cod burn around. To there than there, that island is burned. Okay.
Okay. Yep.
Patrick, anything? Question that you?
So the, the buildings, the units that have a side entrance, is that gonna, is stairwell gonna come out to a pad, or is that gonna be, is that gonna be concrete, a concrete pad with side entrances?
Side entrances are a landing. It's, it's made out of wood, a landing and then four or three steps.
Yeah, there's a, is it gonna be connected to a pad, or is it gonna be mounted to the bylaw?
Yeah, there, there will be a concrete pad, a step at the bottom of the stair.
And will there be a walkway to the?
Yes.
Like a cement or paved walkway to those stairs, obviously, so, okay.
Is, is either walkway shown on the plans?
The walkways did not get on the plan, that was...
So that was one of our comments. Just looking at that rendering, you can see that, that's the entrance to the house, but there's just grass there. And that's, the way, renderings aren't always accurate, but there ought to be a walkway shown and just, you know, whatever kind of walkway it is from the doorways to the driver...
I amend the plans, I could not amend the plans last week because my engineer was in Florida golfing.
We don't allow that in my office.
But there'd be, the walkways would be the same as, as, as is shown on building one. You know, out the end, out the end of each building is a...
Yeah, if you get Adam on the plan.
Yeah, no, not a problem.
Any other questions from all members of the board? I know this, this is not a public hearing, but I know there are some people here that if, you know, just entertain, if someone has a question or a comment, again, not a public hearing, but I, people came out to, to ask about this, I'll entertain everybody. It's, it's good back there. Okay, good. Paul, anything to add to this?
No, as, as we've discussed, this is in our ducking that, that the infrastructure's already in the ground, the pavement's already there. And I understand that, that the owners really just kind of want to go forward with their original plan, and, and I can understand that they, they, you know, don't want to spend money on redesigning or tearing up pavement and redoing it. So given the circumstances, you know, it, it is what it is, and, and we really don't have many more comments to the plans other than what we put together in our review memo for the board. And so, having said that, it seems like we're, we're pretty much there with this plan. There's not much more that could be done, and the board could handle a couple of outstanding things, like the, the lighting that Rob suggested and showing the walkways. Those could be handles as conditions of approval if the board wanted to just move this project forward.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'll, you know, cue the board here, would you be ready to vote on this tonight?
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready.
Joe? Would you be ready to vote on this?
It's only those two conditions we've talked about, right?
So we would be asking basically for approval with the two conditions that the additional lighting is shown on the plan for the, the back parking lot area, and the walkways to the doorways would be shown on the plan. And that could, that's a very small detail, we're not gonna hold you up for that. If, that being said, if you guys are ready to, I'm sorry, Charlie?
Just so we're clear on the mechanics of all this, too. So if you make those conditions, and then we would, and Paul, tell me how you think we file an amended plan, and the planner be authorized by the board to accept the amended plan showing that to his satisfaction.
Yes.
And then we'll incorporate those as part of the plan.
Yes, and, and, you know, there are, there are standard conditions that we put on most of these permits, and you're familiar with those, things like the landscaping needs to be maintained, any utilities, a transformer that's put out there might, should be screened. Those are kind of standard conditions that you've all seen before. So it wouldn't just be those two conditions, there'll be some standard conditions.
Right, right, but those are the specific conditions to this project. And that's fine, so that if this board then sees its way to voting on this tonight, we'd do it with those two conditions, and of course filing the revision to the plan to show those and leave it to the planner to accept those on behalf of the board and to oversee whatever has to be done. Okay.
All right. So with that being said, we need a full three votes here. So I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with conditions, the standard conditions, plus there are two other conditions that we discussed tonight. One would be to make sure that they, these two things get on the plan. One is the walkways, as discussed, and the other is the lighting near the dumpster, so that the raccoons can find their way.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second? Anything else on the motion? Seeing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous three-zero.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well, you, you've gotta be the most familiar guy with that property. You've, you've circled around.
No, I did Jaguar and Land Rover.
Did you do the gas station, too?
We opposed the gas station.
Yes.
We opposed it.
Well, you were, you opposed the gas.
Yeah. We, we were, on behalf of Jaguar and Land Rover, we had concerns about the redevelopment of the gas station. It all got worked out. The Robichos also had concerns, if I recall. It all got worked out in the end, but this is the first time I've dealt with this particular property.
I thought you had the, you were...
I took over side, you were on on that one. I knew you were involved, but I didn't decide.
Jaguar, I took over Jaguar Land Rover when it, when it took court, when there was an appeal. So, all right, I'm gonna...
All right, so Jim, you'll get, whatever you gotta do, get with Paul and...
We're in the delivery room, waiting there.
Oh, I am.
Yeah, we're gonna get, we're gonna get Paul back to the social hospital?
Yep.
Okay.
See, we've been trading comments, because I have a new grandson one Thursday, late afternoon.
This Thursday?
Yeah.
Well, congratulations.
Thanks. I had very little to do with it, but I got the mother launched many years ago.
Great.
I'm coming back in, I've gotta say goodbye to my folks.
Oh, okay. All right, so we've moved right along. We've got our two main pieces of business out of the way. Now we're into discussion phase, and we have phase one, modifications and discussion of phase two, when Doris gets her oats. This is, Paul, this is just a discussion, we're not voting on anything tonight, right? We're just kind of looking at this, this is from Morse Street.
There were some minor changes to the approved site plan, and there were just a few too many for me to call minor, and so I had suggested that David come back in and meet with the board, go over the things that were deviations from the approved plan, and ask the board how you want to handle those modifications. And also wanted to set the stage for David to, to talk to you about the next phase going forward.
Just looking at, see if he's got a lot. These are approved site plans.
That's the original?
Yeah. And it looks like you've got some, some... What I wanted to do...
So this is eighty-three Morse Street. Uh, this is, some of us will remember, is the old burn sun floor covering plant.
I think this is somebody who worked there, is that right?
I did, like I said, anybody who finds a nineteen fifty-five Ford belongs to my father, it washed down the river in the flood.
That was a new car.
It was, it was.
So.
Also called the space center.
Now the space center.
Norwood Space Center, yes, right.
How we doing down there?
It's all one. Thank you, thanks to you guys.
Boy, it's.
We pretty much populated everything we have. Uh, we're up to about two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of the three fifty that's out there. And, um, this phase two parking plan, just wrapping this all up, sets the stage for what do we wanna do next.
All right, so why don't you go, unless, Paul, you have any introduction here or you wanna just jump right in and why don't you tell us what's happening and what we're doing and where we're going?
So there's, there's about sixteen pages in this package of the approved plans, there's about three we're gonna talk about. So we can go through them all if you wish. Um, but if the, two is just more summary. Three is more of a survey. Four, same, water, water acts, wetlands. You get to page five. You can notice the number down in the bottom, uh, right there, is the plan number, is the plan number five. Now, for some reason unbeknownst to me, I gave Staples the file and the PDF comments appear here and don't appear in there. So I don't know what happened, so I apologize, it's my, my fault, but I can bring copies down tomorrow morning. But this, this page is the most significant change out of all of it. So what it shows, it shows two things. One is a water retention area along the Ponce River we built behind what we call building five. We did it exactly as it's proposed, it's there. What you have in your hands here is a courtyard plan. Now, that is something we, we did on our own. This crosshatched area here is basically a thirty-foot-high brick wall supported by the concrete pad behind it, so the wall is here on the edge of the courtyard. Behind it is a pad with a steel girder system that's, keeps the wall up, and then there's a building here. These are all historic, the brick, the masonry, you know, that's also part of the architectural appeal of the property.
Just so, when you drive into the property, we're talking on the right-hand side?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
This, where building, this building is?
So when you drive in, you're along this side here, the courtyard is back here.
Okay.
So the only way to the courtyard is either come around for a delivery, but it, what it's designed as is a courtyard accessible by all the tenants in the buildings. So it's a true courtyard for the tenants and for use as events or whatever other activities we might do. And this area is part of, the approval was to, to demolish all of this here, open it all up. The short street is right here, is separated by basically a buffer of plantings. So we also thought that this wall is a good buffer between the residential use and the commercial use, especially if there's any activity here in the courtyard for noise, light, whatever, so forth. So we did have a lot of asphalt, we had huge concrete pads, we had equipment, some machinery back here. We removed all of that, we left the wall, a little shed, and we built this courtyard. This courtyard was designed to include some items that we did not complete, which are noted above. But basically what we did, it's all landscaped courtyard with shrubberies, small trees, grass, large, uh, kind of gravel, uh, forty by ninety platform and lighting. And the idea is from building eight, building six, building ten, there are doors, tenant doors and common doors that go onto that courtyard.
We looked at, David, um, gave Pat and I a tour and he showed us the courtyard. Is, is it a hundred percent done or you still have some work to do?
It's done. We did what we thought we should, what we didn't do is a little patio shown here, uh, concrete benches that were shown in the plan. Reason being is we're, we're trying to determine how the tenants use the courtyard. So we created the courtyard, we created the greenery, we created the landscaping, we created the patio. We put out seating, a barbecue, et cetera, and now we're gonna see how the tenants use this.
Yeah, you gotta take a look at that.
Yeah, and you guys are welcome to come on down as an invite to take a walk and see all of the various things that we've done.
You providing guided tours for them?
Guided tour, followed by a beer personal.
Careful now.
No lefty out of stocky.
You'll, you'll get more with a guided tour than an unguided tour, I'll say that.
So.
Safer that way.
That, that's a significant change to the plans. Everything else is a minor modification, changed some materials, et cetera, but I'll take you through.
So, Paul, the courtyard is, is it changed from the original plan?
Yeah, so the courtyard was not part of the approved plan and, um, there were some other changes that were made, um, to the approved plan and, um, I had wanted David to, to go through anything that was different than what the board voted on, um, so that those changes could be approved by the board as, as a modification to the site plan.
I'll take you through all the change.
It seems to me that the courtyard would be, I mean, not seeing it, I'm, Paul's seen it, but it would be a, a nice addition.
Right.
I mean, a nice, yeah. I mean, a nice addition to the, to the park and the, 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 the campus, if you will.
Correct.
Versus a parking lot.
Right.
You know. But so, uh.
But there are other things that, that, uh, Dave will point out that were, you know, that don't quite follow.
Is primarily the parking plan. So two hundred and sixteen spaces up in the top left corner are required. We met the requirement, we provided two hundred and sixteen spaces. What this shows is a couple changes to the number where they were on the plan. It's basically it. So up in the top left corner here, this row, uh, provided for twenty-five spaces, we actually, we should create a twenty-three. Over here, you see these little bump outs, striped areas, little striped peninsulas coming off the building. All right, so this is where the personal beer is, uh, little bird events over here, um, paradas is here. These, these buil, this building was renovated, where everybody had a garage door and a man door. We thought we were renting to contractors. We got one contractor, we got a brewery, we got an event space, we got an international bakery.
Yeah, that was the initial plan, was you're gonna have electricians and plumbers?
Yeah, exactly, right. And that contractor has since moved out and there's another commercial tenant there, it's, uh, giving the glam who provides, uh, gowns and tuxedos to unfortunate kids for prom. You know, so it's a charitable event. But after constructing this, um, we were also told that we now have to put bollards in front of all the overhead doors. So they were rendered useless. And so we never actually built this striped area here, these striped areas blocking off the overhead doors.
Is that the building department said you had to put those there? I would think.
So it's, it's my understanding that, um, the plumbing code requires.
Yeah, I read that, it was the plumbing.
Grease traps, um, oil and grease traps, um, in any buildings that have doorways that open where you can drive a vehicle in. And so, um.
That became cost prohibitive.
That, so, once their plans changed and they weren't planning to rent the contractors that were gonna drive in and out, they, they, um, the plumbing inspector asked David to install those bollards to make sure that those doors could never be converted or used, yeah.
I see, yeah, I read that, that the plumbing inspectors, and I was, I was curious on that, how that, you know, how that happened, but that explains it.
Couldn't wait instead of the bollards, I mean, if you want the bollards, great, but what about just something inside the door, like a fencing or?
Well, it's still, the bollards, the bollards were, were placed appropriately to allow, like if a forklift had to get around or a tractor or some, you know, bringing in, like loading if they were onto a car. But that would mean parking out here.
Are they already installed?
They're already installed, throughout the process.
Yeah.
So anyhow, this, this, this becomes an area where we could have, we, we asked for maybe come, we might, we wanna revisit this sometime for parallel parking possibly, for more parking, but it also could be kind of a common area of something, it could have landscaping. It's gonna change to something else eventually, but these were not put in, that's the bottom line. In the back of this building, we had a dumpster pad here, which we did not build because we built this one down here and used it and it became a management nightmare. It was, it was bombarded by the self-storage customers as well as anyone passing by that eventually found that thing. And it became the common dump. And we just eventually pulled it all out, closed it all off. It was, it was out of control. What we did do is we put our dumpsters back here by the loading docks to this building, out of sight, out of mind. And now the, the tenants go to those dumpsters and dump there.
So you're on TV, everybody goes now.
Thank you.
Don't be going down there.
They're being moved to undisclosed locations.
Out front, just a comment, we, there was supposed to be a central mailbox here. We actually moved it inside the building per the request of the post office, so everybody comes inside the property. This is just a comment that we installed granite curving instead of asphalt curving that was everywhere. Uh, this called for concrete sidewalks, we actually put in brick sidewalks. So we, you know, we took it up a notch because we wanted to, you know, this is the interest of the property. Down here, same thing, this was an old stone dumpster from Aldrich Stone, they're no longer here. Uh, this is now a, uh, Prosperity Fitness, it's a gym. And we have actually a performance studio going into this space right here. Where, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, go see a show. So stone dumpsters are no longer required. We did add a couple of spaces out here to meet the two sixteen. Uh, this showed six spaces on this end, we actually did less, uh, provided three because there's an overhead door that's actively being used by the tenant, so that would've blocked the overhead door. Notice, that's the changes to the parking.
While you're on that, just so the, why don't we just look at this? I mean, I'm looking at this, you still have two hundred and sixteen spaces, you just moved them around to accommodate, uh, really
As.
as the situation arises and, and through no fault of your own, you know, the plumbing inspector, you know, said you gotta put the bolls in so you lose the spaces in front of that and say it to move things, the dumpster, it's just being relocated. Uh, does anybody see anything other than a minor modification here? I mean, uh.
There's another plan or two, but I just.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on the, on that.
This is parking.
Does anybody have any questions on, on the parking, it's the same amount of spaces, it just got shifted a little bit, any?
It's all striped, everywhere, you know, it's all marked out, right, so you're all set.
Paul, any, anything on the parking that you see as an issue?
You know, I did talk to, um, the assistant building inspector this afternoon about, right in front of the buildings where the, those doors are. He said that if you put parking there, um, parallel as suggested, it, it could be blocking some entrances. He also indicated that there should be a conversation with the fire department about that because, um, they might wanna use that right in front of, like a fire lane in front of the building. So, um, if the board goes along with, um, approving the modifications, I, I just kinda wanna call that one out as no, we're not approving a row of parallel parking in front of the building at this point in time.
Yeah, there's none shown.
Okay, none shown, so that's good.
Right.
Well, we conform even without.
Even without, you still conform, so. If, if they don't put any parking there, Paul, we're still good, right?
I.
Yeah, we would come back.
Yeah.
For approval for the.
Yeah.
We're only doing site plan now, discussion, right?
Yeah.
Nothing of special permits.
Right. Um, any questions on parking before we continue to the next? Joe, you comfortable with it?
Everything's good.
Yeah?
Next one is just some minor infrastructure. This comment here is calling, it's calling for grease traps here, which would've been a common grease trap for these six overhead doors, so we didn't install it because we're not, you know, using the vehicles in the building. And then we just noted that originally there was a transformer out here, which has been removed and a new transformer was built here to service the property. We invested about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars here to build a newer electric room and now all the major tenants are metered directly by Norwood Light. And this will come into play down the road when we come back and look at more, adding more parking back here, you know. It's just a note.
Anything on that, any, just, I mean, that's just a simple movement of a transformer, removal of grease trap that won't be used.
Landscape?
Pat, you know, there's a new sheriff.
There's a new sheriff in town, yeah. I'm just watching.
We, we basically adhered to the plan up front. We actually added three more trees that were not called for, so. What you see is like eight CA, six CD, whatever, those are codes. When you come down here and you read, you know, what those codes are, you know, whether they're shrubberies, trees, plantings, et cetera, they call for a count, eight of those, six of those, you know, et cetera. So in this case, we added three more trees out front. We added two additional trees in this landscaping area out front. When Paul came through, we did not install these three trees, primarily concerned about snow storage and salt and so forth, but we did go back to the landscaper and came up with a solution and we put the three trees shown here, since you were there, so they've been planted.
Those other trees that are shown, um, right across from that, the two, and then the two above that, those are in?
Those are all in.
And the one up above in the island or each end?
All trees are in.
Okay, all right.
So we've added landscaping.
We've added trees.
Any questions on the, 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 the planned changes here?
My job, my work is done.
Added trees, yeah.
This is the courtyard back here, you know, so there'd be more landscaping there. And that is it, changes to the plan.
So basically we've got the parking, which has just been rearranged. We're not losing any spaces, we're just moving stuff around. We have a few little movement, movement of a transformer, you know, the movement of a dumpster, uh, to an undisclosed location. We've, uh, and added a courtyard.
Right, and the ball, and the bollards, I think.
And the bollards in front, at the direction, we moved the, the mailboxes because the post office wanted you to. We've added the, the ball, bollards because the plumbing inspector wanted you to. So those, I mean, uh, I mean, I, uh, personally, I, 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 uh, I see no issues with anything here. I think the courtyard, not seeing it, but, but in my mind, I can see the use of that would get, would be a great benefit to, to the campus and, uh, I, I would be, I don't have any issues with anything that you've done here. Any, oh, Joe, anything?
No, just, uh, these gray, these buildings here.
That's the next part of the discussion.
So that's the next part too. Have you had to take any of the buildings down? You'll be saving them all?
Try to, as much as we can.
All right, anything on, on what you've seen here though, on phase one? Rob?
I'm comfortable, I like, like seeing updates and upgrades and improvements, you know, it's great.
Brian?
Nothing really.
Patrick? Mrs. Homewood?
Debbie Homewood, forty-nine H Street. I love those buildings. I think you did a beautiful job, I'm just speaking as a citizen. I don't even have to go to the south end now to get my, it's, they're beautiful.
Thank you.
And, and they're great and they're occupied and we've got, we made TV last week for the guy with the, what is it? Luchum Folsom, what do they call that stuff, all the radio stuff, um.
Oh, the guy from the, the Boston Phoenix?
The archive.
The archive guy, and, and it was in Norwood and I'm like.
Beaver Archives.
Yeah, I gotta get in and see that.
So I think you're, I think the buildings look great and
The hoarder?
As a, as a town citizen, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Got some character locked.
It's been a pleasure doing work with you guys.
Beautiful.
It really is a, a, well, Paul would say. It really is a, a, uh, what Paul would say, I mean, so far down there, it is a really nice redevelopment of a, a building that was sat blighted for years and years and, and, uh, it's really coming along nice. So are we looking for a motion to accept the mo, the changes here, Paul?
Seeing that the board really has no concerns with the modifications that were made, I'd, I'd recommend the board take a vote on approving those modifications.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion in that regard.
So moved, second.
Anything else on the motion? Seeing then we'll put it to a vote, all those in favor of acceptance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, three zero. So we're good there.
So I'll write, I'll give you a letter, David, that puts all that in writing so that you're all covered with a paper trail.
Move into the back, colored pictures. This is the original marketing plan that we, we developed, so it's not actually, it's close, but not accurate to what is actually built for parking, et cetera, and so forth, but what we've done is focus on this row of buildings, two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve. Kind of like a street, you know, even on the right, hot on the left, building one is the self-storage. We now have built out five hundred units of self-storage, so that's fully burnt, complete, now it's just being absorbed. This building is fully leased, commercial tenants, this building is fully leased, the artist community's back here, commercial tenants in the front. Workbar has moved to this location as well, from the Staples location, so they're now-
What's there, I'm sorry?
Workbar.
That's a co-sharing, uh, they were located at Staples, Staples has their own model of it now, but if you don't have an office as such, you go there and you're basically renting a test-
Oh yeah, they just have a little room in the back or something, where you could go work on.
So they were doing it in partnership with Staples, but they left Staples, Staples has its own thing, and they've gone over here.
Oh, good.
You're working for mom, and I'm like, listen to the kids. Building eight is more commercial space in the front, and then the courtyard's back here, and we have more offices and so forth looking on here. Ten and twelve are more or less as-is with some, with some cleanup and improvement, but have been used for storage and warehousing right now. Primarily because back here, we're kinda choked off with everything else that's back here. Building five, we, we weren't sure what to do with it, but then we put the gymnasium in here, now we got the performance space going in here, this is warehouse, so this is kinda turning into a, kind of our entertainment building, per se, you know. And then the gray area back here is the big four-story brick wall you see when you pull in. You know, it starts here, goes all the way down, comes to the river, and then in behind, if you come around, it's all wood frame construction, and you got these wood appendages, and this is kind of a ton of it back here. So, we're starting to look at it, all right, what would we do here? And you would obviously have to remove a good chunk of it to open up a field of parking back here as well, to support whatever goes on here. And then that would open up the thoroughfare here, and it also provides some more parking for these buildings here.
Is that building sound, that lab back building?
We have to, we have not done any studies on it, no engineering-
There's no roof.
There's, yeah, there's no-
The big one or the small one?
The big one.
Well, what it is, is an erector set of steel-
Yeah.
With a brick skin. There's no building.
Was that the drawing building?
There's no floors.
I don't know.
There's no walls.
To get off the, my, I have, my mother has pictures of all kinds of machinery, the old Burtonsun plant being installed there, back in the thirties.
Yeah, it's kind of the Batcave is what it is. You come in here, it's four stories high, the windows are here, but there's no floors. So you look up and you can see the sky, the wooden ceiling has collapsed, but along the walls are these gears and chains and so forth. What I believe happened, there's a, those old presses were here, which extruded the strips of linoleum. And somehow they were attached to the mechanism in the ceiling, came along in this building, and then came down again, so they were either cooled or heated or something in here. There's terracotta brick in here, so that, that, that means heat. Either took the heat out or added the heat, so anyhow, we have to bring a structural engineer here and say, alright, can we reuse this? You know, we don't know, you know, we have to look at that. And then, if we did that, what could we put back here, how would we park it, you know, and so forth and so forth, so we're looking at obviously more commercial use, but we're also considering and starting to think about residential use back here. Which could be in the form of, you know, professional housing, supports the employees and the businesses that are coming here. We also see it as a, as a big draw to helping continue to revitalize South Norwood and the flats here on Washington Street. Because if you bring actual residents here, especially workers, professional workers with that income, they are gonna migrate into South Norwood, they are gonna go there, they're gonna eat the restaurants, they're gonna go to the stores, and you're gonna start to see that. It's the big boulder. You know, we're bringing enough businesses here, but they leave every night. You know, what you want is people to stay, to start to get that going. And we see that as a way to possibly help you in the revitalization of South Norwood as well. So, nothing on the board, nothing being proposed, we're just looking at it.
Question, building two. Uh, yeah, is, I mean, right now it's more of an event, uh, use, I mean, there's been all kinds, there's been some concerts down there, there's been some, you know, some shows and, you know, small little, you know, ra, record shows and stuff like that, I guess, but is that the, is that the plan for building two, is that gonna be an event use, or is there a plan for breaking it up and, you know, it's a big room?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's actually too big for events, you know, events are five thousand square feet, that's fifteen thousand square foot building. So, we have been doing events in there, Angela Meringa Littlebird Events has been starting to take the lead to help do more. We're not an event group, you know, we're real estate guys, so you need an operator to do that. But, I think it's kind of a placeholder for a while, while we see what goes on here. It is the head of the ship, you know, it's our front-end building, so that's the reason we skipped it, because we wanted to see where this thing goes. You know, January two thousand sixteen, we had no idea where we would be now, couldn't have even dreamed this, you know, so we, we are considering that, and that would kinda tie in with the addition of the parking here. That's more commercial office, some of that, build the event space into it.
So, tonight it's just a discussion on the next phase, and there's nothing in front of us, it's just, and you're asking the board just kind of where you, what you think, or?
And, and part of this, the other suggestion that I had, and, and David had offered, um, to invite the board members for a tour of, of what has been redeveloped so far. And, um, and I think that that would be useful for the board to get a sense of what's there before we start entertaining a discussion, a serious discussion about what should be next. It, it, um, it should be noted that, um, the property is zone manufacturing, and residential uses are not allowed on manufacturing property, um, currently. And so to allow some, um, residential in, in a redevelopment of, of the last building on the end, um, that would, uh, need some sort of a zoning change to allow for that. But to get, you know, a good flavor of, of what they've done, and he's got a really eclectic mix of different tenants there, I was gonna suggest that, um, the board, uh, you know, take, take David up on his offer and, and we could meet there late in the afternoon one day, he could take us, uh, for a tour, and then, um, if the board wants to reconvene and, and have a discussion about what should go next in that building, I think you'd be better informed after having been there and gotten, gotten a little tour.
Yeah, I agree, and I think, I think the thing on your part really is find out on that, on phase two, that building, what you can do. You know, does it come, all coming down, or can it be saved, what, you know, I mean, I think that, you know, you have to figure that out, you know, what's, you know, if the building can be saved, what can you do with it, but your engineer's gonna tell you that.
Well, you can do-
Or does it have to come down, the guy's gonna say, this is a wreck, Jerry, take it down.
Yeah, I mean, it could, you know, if it's saved, it doesn't matter whether it's residential or commercial, right? As long as it's like a lightweight construction, it's not gonna be heavy industrial, but, um, and then whether it comes down, if it has to come, we would, we would not like to take it down, but you start getting the seismic code issues and everything else with engineers, structural engineers, yeah, we don't know yet, you know, we have, that would be the next step, is to go look at that and start to evaluate that.
What's your timeframe on that one?
We would like to start now with the process of evaluating it and speaking to the community about the uses there and the tolerance for those, you know.
I think the biggest thing, if you were to go, if your, your wish was to, to do lofts or apartments or whatever, some kind of housing there, you know, the biggest thing would be to, to, you know, the number. I mean, that's gonna be, you know, that's key number one. Uh, like, like Paul said, it, that'd be a little bit longer process, uh, that would require a town meeting vote, um, you know, which is, you know, but, uh, I think, I think it balls in your court a little bit to figure out what you wanna do, what the billing will handle, and, and and what, if you were looking for housing, and part of it being housing or mixed use or whatever, um, you know, what's the number?
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you look at the definition of mixed use, you know, it's commercial, industrial, residential, you know, so it's only just trying to go with what this is, what it should be, you know. Forgetting zoning, forgetting whatever else is going on out there. You know, that just makes sense to add it somewhere on this site, you know, and this is the likely place to do it.
It's crying for a restaurant town.
Well, that would ring the restaurant, you'd say.
When, when we did mixed use, the mixed use overlay district last year, part of the argument for that is it helps to revitalize and, and bring new vitality to the downtown if we can get people living there who will patronize the stores. And, and as Dave said, if we, you know, provide people who were there after hours by living there, the hope, the hope would be that they would patronize the other commercial district in the town, the South Norwood district, that has restaurants and, and other shops, um-
Especially if it's an easy walk.
It, it is an easy walk, I mean, we're, you know, we're outside of that-
You're right on the bus route, you could possibly go forty hour, I don't know if that's a consideration.
We're, we're outside of that corridor that was approved for the beer and wine licenses a number of years ago. We wish we could have some of those, and they're sitting there not being used, but it's, um, you know, these different things feed off each other. You know, you get more activity here downtown, we hope it'll help the businesses. We do something here that provides more activity, we think it will help the, the businesses in South Norwood.
I don't disagree with you, I, I mean, like I said, I mean, everything, I mean, from, just from my opinion, everything you've done so far, I mean, you're, you're going, you know, top shelf, you know, and the way you're setting this up and, you know, the things you're putting in and, you know, so, I mean, I'm, like I said, we have to wait and see what you got and, and go from there, uh.
This, this is historic preservation in action, which we discussed at the last town meeting, in a different context, but, you know, we're taking old buildings and putting them to new uses. I, I, I think personally, I mean, I think it's a very exciting concept that Dave and his group have done.
I agree, I agree.
Thank you, we'll just-
Any other comments on, uh, I mean, I, I think that, um, on, we, obviously we can't discuss what, what's going there because we don't know. But any comments on the plan or anything, or from anybody that?
We wanted to, we wanted to, you know, ha, open the discussion with you folks on this. Besides dealing with the minor modification issues that Paul had raised and which we needed to resolve. And we're not asking, obviously, we can't ask you to approve anything, we're not sure yet, but the invitation is there for a, a tour, uh, to point out what's there, and, um, give you folks the, the, the view that you don't get when you're looking at stuff on an easel. That will help, um, the board members to think about what maybe ought to be or could be done, and to help us also in thinking about it with both comments and, and reactions.
Does your property line go all the way up to the old train? I mean, do you have?
Yeah.
You go right up to the MBTA, I'm not the MBTA, the, uh, CRX or CSR, whatever it is.
I think it is considered technically MBTA.
Old colony.
Old col, yeah.
Yeah, it's right, no, it comes right up to here, and then the fence back here.
The old, the old flats up there, the old landings are still up there.
Yep.
And, and- You could open that up, you could bring in, bring in people by train, that would be great.
I'd take you on a tour, show you back here, this is very cool back here, the works and the stuff in there.
Yeah, I've been up there.
Need to wear boots?
So there are additional buildings there, that building three at the bottom?
Yeah.
That's there, um, the building at the end, the gray building on the left, um, and at the top of the plan, that long building, so the, the big gray building that we're talking about now is not the only building left on the site, and there are other interesting opportunities for them, and and it, it is one of those things that, you, you know, you really need to be on the ground and look around. So what I'd like to do is, if the board is all interested, um, we will work with David on scheduling, you know, a, a five in the afternoon meeting or something, what, whatever will work for the board members, and, um, and then have a little tour, and then we'll, we'll schedule another informal meeting.
Maybe a little bit earlier if possible, it might have some daylight.
You want daylight, you know, it's getting dark light later, I hope, but-
No, I, I, like I said, for just my, my own perspective, that, uh, I love what's going on down there, it really is a, when you think, when, you know, you think of it, what's redevelopment, and this is really, this is what you see in other old mills throughout the Commonwealth, you know, you see in other towns that they're, you know, redeveloping, making them, you know, reusing them, and-
There really is a private public venture, you know, because without the, the flexibility that's been granted us to do these things, you know, it wouldn't be there, you know, so.
They could have come in and just bulldozed all the old buildings and started from scratch, and, and the, the approach that they've taken is, is definitely more risk for them, because they don't know what's up with this old building once they pull a wall back, um, and, and it takes more effort to do this, but I'm, I'm really pleased with the results so far.
You know, I think, when I think back of what we, you know, when we went to the zoning board and then went to the planning board, it required a, a certain amount of imagination on, on the part of the board members as well as the developers, to, uh, be able to devise, uh, the different ways of dealing with this. You know, we got the zoning board to approve sort of blocks of space instead of having to come back every time. And one of the problems of manufacturing district is you can't have retail in certain uses like that without special permits, so we got that in a way that allowed us to find tenants and get them in there, and, uh, this board was very good when we were do, dealing with the exteriors of the building. So, we, we want to see what we can do to keep the project moving forward.
Beautiful, anything else from the board, we'll let these gentlemen go home?
Let you guys go home.
Look, Paul's at the hospital, hopefully, soon.
That's right.
Alright, well, thank you, and then again, anytime you bring beer in, they, they will come.
Refreshments will be served.
We'll, when there's, that'll bring-
Be careful now, with it. Where's the ethics?
Public safety.
All within the, the ethics rules.
Right, exactly.
Thank you very much.
I gotta check out this, uh, I like the, the idea of this thing back there.
Yeah, come on in, guys.
We are done with you gentlemen.
Thank you.
You got more?
One more item.
Oh, you asked, no, you're not.
Well, we'll see, my wife said she'd be home, but I'll find out in a little while. We're in the labor room for most of the afternoon.
Good luck.
Alright, so the last, oh, she's in. Oh, we're waiting on the down, we're waiting, right, waiting for the fall off?
Fortunately, he's not required to be there physical.
Alright, so we'll get you out of here real quick here, Paul. Discussion, planning board vacancy and meeting with selectmen. Alright, so as we discussed earlier tonight, we know that there is a vacancy, uh, on the planning board. And tomorrow night at seven o'clock, uh, any members of the board that can make it, uh, we are gonna meet with the board of selectmen to discuss the vacancy on the planning board. It is the, uh, recommendation of the chair that, uh, that the, we recommend that Brian fill the vacancy, be appointed as a, a full member of the, a full voting member of the board on all issues, uh, up until the time of the April election. This requires a meeting with the board of selectmen, it requires a vote of the, both the board of selectmen and the planning board combined. And this will happen tomorrow night.
How many members do you need, just?
Well, I, I'm, I'm wondering because if, if you gentlemen can't make it or whatever, I'm wondering if we could do a, a, a vote tonight, the three of us, and if you can't make it, I could take that vote, now, I don't know if it'll, if they'll accept it, but that if I took that vote to the board of selectmen tomorrow night and said that on, you know, tonight's meeting that we unanimously voted, uh, three zero for the appointment of Brian as a full member, uh, if they would accept that or if you have to be there in present, I don't anticipate any issues here, but, um, I don't know, do you think that?
It's at seven o'clock tomorrow night, right?
Seven o, tomorrow night up in the-
I intend to be there.
Okay. Okay. I will be there.
I can be there.
If you can be there, great, and then, so, if, like I said, the recommendation of the chair is that we bring forward Brian's name to be voted on, is there any objection to that?
No.
Okay.
I support that.
Support that, okay, good. So, then that's what we will do. Does Brian have to be there tomorrow night?
He actually said he could make it, so, I think that would be a good idea if the, if the board of selectmen have questions for him.
Questions, and I'll introduce you and, and, you know, say, come on, what are we doing with this guy? All right, so that's, so good, then we're good on that. Department updates, other business? Paul, anything?
Nope.
Okay. Anything quickly, so we get Paul down to see his new grandbaby, maybe? Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Good night.